Oh, I can't tell because they're running a special meeting at 3 o'clock.
Oh crap.
They just, they just went live.
They-
Oh no, I got my preview. There it is.
Okay, good.
Yes, we're good on that.
Okay.
So Mayor, to answer your question, so it is a little after 3. I know, I know you haven't called the meeting. Sure.
Good afternoon.
Recording in progress.
Um, welcome to Millbury City Council's special agenda for May 12th, 2023. This is 3:00, 3 PM. This is a continuation of our goal-setting meeting from Saturday, May 6th, and our continuation from a, from Tuesday, June 9th. So this is the third day that we're looking at goal-setting. It will still come to City Council. So this is still a discussion point and a prioritizing of goal settings. And what I'm going to ask the city clerk or city manager is clarification that we had public comment for items not on the agenda at the beginning of this agenda, which was actually Saturday. But if we should have items not on the agenda today, I can open that up. You just tell me what to do.
Yes, Mayor. So we do place items, public comment on every agenda for items not on the agenda.
Okay.
For the public.
All right. So what we will do then is have roll call and pledge, and then we will open it up for, uh, public comments for items not on the agenda. All public comment, as it is for council during goal-setting, is for one minute. And it's one minute per strategic initiative. That's how we tried to get through the initiatives. That's how we've done it since Saturday. So, city clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Pappin?
Here.
Councilmember Kaylin?
Here.
Councilmember Fung?
Here.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Here.
Mayor Snyder?
Here.
All council members are present.
Thank you. If you could all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. So the first thing on the agenda is public communication. This is for items not on the agenda. And just a reminder for the people who might be zooming in or in the audience, tonight, or today, when we're doing goal-setting, you can raise your hand or pull in a speaker's card for each strategic initiative. We're handling each one, one at a time. And then, um, I'm not exactly sure how we're wrapping up at the end of the day, but that might be an additional time. But this is for items not on today's goal-setting. So public comment for items not on today's goal-setting. Everybody will have an opportunity for every strategic initiative, all six of them. So does, I'm seeing questioning faces, but if there's... Go ahead, Mary Ann.
Please come up to the microphone.
Come up and we'll, we'll try to help address this.
I just want to make sure, if I want to speak on anything on this paper on your initiative, so I do not.
Correct. And what you could do is on that speaker slip, if you want to speak on 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, put 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, so I know to call you each time that SI comes up.
Are you serious? Good, thank you.
Yeah. So you don't have to do six sheets of paper, just one.
Okay.
Okay. And, and same thing with the public. As long as we know who you are the first time, but you raise your hand for 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, or 6, you will have a chance to speak on each strategic initiative and the subheadings of that. But council will go through first, and then it will be the public. City clerk, do we have someone?
We have one hand.
Okay. I can't see that. So if you would please call them?
Lillian, if you could unmute yourself, please.
And Lillian, did she request language assistance?
Yes, here. Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Hi, Lillian, please go ahead.
Yeah. I do have a translation for me, yeah, because I, uh, I want to speak Chinese.
Um, you want to speak Mandarin or Cantonese?
Uh, either, either way.
Uh, Mandarin, please. Give me a moment to change the language. Okay, go right ahead, please.
My apologies for interrupting. I think you're talking about the vacant home, house goal. That is not on any of the strategic initiatives today. That didn't make it through the process. Um, and if you are, we can bring you back when we do get to where it was, which was a strategic initiative.
No, Mayor, a point of clarification. That's already been discussed. I, I mean, it's up to the pleasure of the city council, but it's three minutes not on the agenda, and that item is no longer on the council agenda.
Okay, all right. The clock just got set incorrectly to three minutes instead of one, so I'll let you finish, Lillian.
No, should be, no, point of clarification. Public comment not on the agenda is three minutes, Mayor. Correct.
You didn't tell me that. We just talked about one minute versus three. Fine, we'll go to three minutes.
Point of clarification. Three minutes not on the agenda. Items on the agenda, you've limited to one minute.
And, and just, and just to be fair-
Okay, stop. Stop. I'm given an agenda that controls the meeting. Now I understand it's three minutes for items not on the agenda. So, Ms. Lillian, my apologies for interrupting, please continue.
Yeah, I can continue, right?
You're coming in great.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms.- Thank you. So this is-
Okay.
Items not on today's agenda. Are there any other hands or slips? I have no paper slips, but you can bring me a paper slip. Okay, I'm seeing no paper slips. Um, city clerk, do we have anyone else online? Items not on the agenda.
No, Mayor.
Thank you. We are closing. Public comment for items not on the agenda. And we are moving to new business. This is the continuation of the May 9th, 2023 special meeting on strategic initiatives, objectives, and goals. And at this point, I'm turning it over to the city manager and to our, our facilitator, Kathy.
Mayor, just a few quick notes before Kathy provides the briefing. You'll notice the microphones are much improved, so hopefully you won't have to lean into the microphones as much, and it, and it actually picks up some more things. So hopefully we have that fixed. So with that, Kathy's got her-
Thank you. Nice to see you all. Nice to see you all. I think that, um, we've accomplished a lot, and we'll finish up with the goal-setting today. So we're going to try to be as efficient as possible. And for that reason, from here over, and you all in the audience, um, can get a printout of what's here over there in the little box. The new, so what, what Tom and his staff have done, a lot of work, is taken everything we did in the last two days of planning, and they took what you voted on and put it in with what was already started. So some of the things you voted on, let's say infrastructure improvements, are always, now that works, are already in the works. So that's like a special gift. So you don't have to vote for these again. There are 14 here. We don't want to have more than 12 or a couple, but preferably 12 new ones. These things tend to be, many of them complicated and expensive, and, and as you know, staff time, et cetera. So, everything that you, you, you need to come up here and spend a little time looking at this so you get it. Starting over here, on this side, there's a line down here. These are already in the works, you voted on them, and they're being done. Some were started last year, some this year. Is that clear? Okay. So starting over here and moving around, are, after that, those things were taken off, let's say SI 1. Um, you'll see there's no SI 1 here because there was nothing there that was the work in progress group. So this SI 1, what was taken off is anything with a zero. But there were no zeros on this one, as I recall. These are eight points, eight points, five points, five points, and we're going to talk about number six and number three because there's some overlap there. And this, and the same is true. These have everything on them except what was taken off and is already a work in progress. So instead of having 85 to turn into 12, you only have 28 to turn into 12. Does that make sense? Because 14 are here, and some of them were combined. And we were all part of that combination. There still may be some questions regarding that, but I think you'll see that everything is there. So what we're going to do first today is we're going to vote, as in you're going to vote, on two of these, as opposed to, as opposed to more. First choice gets three points, green one. Second choice gets two points, blue one. Now you're going to treat all of this as if it were one initiative. In other words, you can, you can vote on the first two and ignore everything else. Or you can vote on the last two and ignore everything else. Okay? And then we're going to see where we are. And I think that, so think about it. I, I think perhaps, before voting, and of course, we want to hear from the citizens as well, I'd like you to come up and look at them so you know which ones you want to pitch. Does that make sense? So you can pitch your two favorites. This is a sales deal. What you're, who you're selling to is each other. You want, you want each other's vote, right? So, we're going to get it down so that at the end of the next couple of hours, there are 12 left. And if there's, our big disagreements are really close, we're going to put, make a parking lot over there on the flip chart and add those so that as time goes on, if there's a new grant that comes in, or the funds are greater than Tom and you all thought, then those can be pulled off the parking lot. Yes?
Question on process, and also to the public. What we did at the Saturday and Tuesday meetings is, in theory, each councilperson for each initiative, not each item, had one minute to say what they wanted to support. And there was not supposed to be debating on an issue or saying why this one was better than that one. Are we using that same process today? That we each, under each of the six SIs, we have the one that we feel the most strongly about, and we defend it?
No.
So tell, tell us how the process is going to go-
Yes, I'm sorry, it's a little confusing.
And how long each council member will have?
Yes, Gina, and then I'll answer both.
Yeah, just for clarification here. Here's the, the way the city council wrote it is below, and the city surprised it above. Between the dark and the light, highlighted and the regular. Just trying to figure out here.
You're talking about on what was done since the other day?
Is presented.
Why don't you answer that, Tom, because you know it better than I?
Yeah, so, so first and foremost, WIP is work in progress. And then the goals, again, we narrow those down after Saturday's meeting. And the bullet points under some of the goals that were submitted by the council are actually done by staff to provide you with where we are and what the process is. So, yeah, so the bullets were done by staff.
Hold on just a second, please. Okay, so, no, you're not pitching by initiative. You are pitching, you're going to vote for two total across all the initiatives. Your top two.
Hey, good clarification.
Okay, so you might vote for, you might want to pitch, hold BART accountable and develop plan to measure cut-through traffic. That might be the two you're voting on, and you're, and that's it. Now, we're going to revisit it once more and get down to the nitty-gritty. But for example, um, this has zero points, zero points, two points, two points. There, there are many things that are kind of, um, obvious that will probably disappear, which is why you're going to look at this for a few minutes and just say, what out of all of these, I think it's 18 or 28, 28, mean the best, most to me? What two can I not live without?
Okay, again, this is still going over process.
Yes.
So when we just first came in here and saw these, um, under strategic initiative number two, number six, since I wrote that one, I see it as the same as strategic initiative number one, number three. How, when we think we've seen a duplication of something, or something that fits together, how do you want to approach that?
I think the best way is for you all to come over and look, and, and you might just take a few notes, and we'll discuss that before the vote. Does that make sense?
Okay. And then the second question is, because I told the public, we were going to go SI 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and now it doesn't sound like we're doing that.
No, I think we will take all of the comments, uh, at once, if that's all right with you. And, um-
In which case?
City manager, would it be best to give them three minutes?
I would recommend three minutes, but it's at the pleasure of the council.
Now, would you like to do that now, or would you all like to study these a little bit first? Yes, Angelina?
Just to clarify, we will have a quick discussion about possible duplicates before we jump into voting?
Yes.
Okay.
But I want you to study it and look at it and get a sense of it first, because, you know, there's a lot up there. Yes, Gina?
So, it looks like slide number 17, 1, 2. It says work in progress is the artificial turf, a life move thing, so-
Slide number 17, 1 and 2.
Yes. S1, 6.
Ah, okay.
So may I assume that we are not going to back off of those? They are going to continue as works in progress?
Yes, that is correct. Unless there, this council feels like we need to readdress that, and for example, defund it, stop work, go a different direction. But yes, that is a correct assumption.
So is the other way of saying that, don't put your points on that one?
Correct, that's, as Kathy explained, that's, those are already-
Nothing on this side.
I just wanted to be sure that we were going to-
No points over here. All your points are for these.
Again, I, I would say unless there's something that is a red flag with the council, you know, but all in all, I think we're, that is correct.
So where is, what is 16 and 17? Yeah, I was going to ask, it may be an old one that you're looking at.
It's called SI-
The new, the new PowerPoint is-
Oh, I thought you said 17.
Otherwise, on page nine of the handout.
Five, six. The six only goes to six. I don't know if that's... Should, are we missing a sheet, perhaps?
What is the question?
SI 6. Yeah.
That's right.
Oh, okay.
WIP is work in process, no WIP.
We don't need to vote on that because that's already in action. So would you like to hear, um, from the public first, and then look at, study this, or?
How about we let, because all of us are seeing this for the first time, just like the public is seeing it for the first time. Let council come up and look at it.
Yes.
Then we'll sit down and take public comment, and then we'll go into the scoring.
Great, thank you.
I'm seeing some shaking yeses out there. We're cool?
Thank you.
We're cool, okay. All right.
Great.
Counsel, I know this is confusing. This was something that was going to take two months, and we're trying to do it in a week. So.
So this you're ignoring, I mean, this you can look at, but you're not voting on. Already, it's already been, it's already working, yeah. You're only getting two dots for the whole thing. Yeah, a first choice and a second. Now, we may have to go back and revisit it, but please note, we got a lot- Yeah, just cross off whatever. No, but, but just so you notice, there are- And then, and, but, we already, they already have points. So then we're going to look at what are the 12 top. We'll add, we'll add your points to these points. Okay, you're putting, you're voting for the first two of all this. That's correct. We're only going to vote for two things. Got points, right? This is 10 points. We're going to look at adding the points together. Right. Green is three points. Blue is two points. So you've got five points. If you, if you care deeply about something, put everything there. Put all your points there. That's what we did last year. Hopefully, everything will be combined beforehand. I think, I, I think you'll be pleasantly surprised after you do this that it'll be okay. That's correct. Okay, right. And so, and then we'll see what are the top 12. You know, there are quite a few things here that's zero points. Zero points, two points, two points. Eight points, six points, 10 points, right? So you can vote the same way you voted a couple days ago, or differently. We, this, this one, we have to discuss. These two, they're both ends, um, initiative suggestions. Okay, good. Well, we'll do that, right? That's why I want you to look at this. So bring that up when you- Well, we're going to talk about it. Roscoe must be- Hello, hello? All right, so if anybody sees anything that you still think should be combined, we're not voting yet. We're looking at this and making decisions. There are more stickers. Angelina doesn't have stickers. Okay, are there any other things that you see that should be combined? Anyone? All right, let's sit down and talk about that, then hear from the public, and then vote. Then we'll see what we've got.
Bill Williams? Williams?
Okay, we need to, there are a few questions that we have to sort through. And so, people are looking at things they think could be combined, we're going to discuss that, and, and present that before, before voting and before hearing from the public. Okay? So once you all have had a chance to get a sense of what you're going to vote for, and what might be a duplicate, then please sit down, and we will either combine or not, based on whatever the reality is around legislation requirements, and so forth. Okay, Madam Mayor, you brought up just before we started, so I'd like to start with yours. We're just, we're going to discuss things that people think might be combinable.
Okay.
So that when you vote, we know if you're voting for two different things or one.
Okay. So, under strategic initiative number two, number six, and it is, trying to find...
Infrastructure investment, fund and complete RFP for creation of Eastside specific plan, with lots of details.
So much easier if we were single sided, and I love double sided. What page?
Number six. Three and six, under SI one is number three.
Okay, thank you Gina.
SI two is number six.
Okay, so, on the handout, page three, slide number five, SI two, number six.
No, no, no.
That's why I'm looking at it.
She's giving this slide.
Yeah.
She's, she's...
It's, it's the one right in front of you, Kathy, on the bottom.
Oh, I know, but what did you say for this one?
No, 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 I haven't gotten there yet.
Okay, thank you.
So that one, I wrote that, to give everybody an idea of what goes into an environmental impact report, to make the East, because what the subcommittee is supposed to do is identify what the consultants will study in the process of creating the Eastside specific plan. So I am happy to give up number six, and to me, it fits in strategic initiative number one. It's just basically tasks underneath the creation of an Eastside specific plan. So if it's okay with the council, I just cross out six?
So six is a, is a subset or a...
A subset of SI one, number three.
Number three, so...
And it's only because...
Now, so shall we move those points up?
That was the question, because we went to the council...
Not really, because you, that, so that's a question, because you voted on these separately.
And that would be a question for all of these. So for each one of us who had an initiative that got points but is being merged, do we want to take those points and add them on up, even though they're going to go into a different strategic initiative? Or do we want to revote entirely all over again?
Mayor, if I may, I think, and Kathy correct me, I think the points are mute at this point. Because now you're going to take all of those that are no work in progress, and you're going to prioritize, you're going to take your top one, your first priority, then your second priority, so the points are kind of not relevant. We wanted to put those up there, just for your information, to remind you of where you were last time.
So we're not going to, we're not going to add today's points with the points from before, we're just going to take the top ones.
Well, yeah, because I think, I think, I think we're right, I mean, we're on a level playing field right now, so this is all new, and now we've narrowed it down from 85 goals to 28.
We've got 28. We have to get down to 12.
Plus the four, plus the 14 that are work in progress. So I, I mean, my recommendation is, now look at that.
Okay.
Your, your number one and your number two.
And so the answer to the question is, it's a moot point, but I'm just going to put up point plus four, question mark, because if we're very close with some...
Yeah, I would just, Kathy, for, maybe we put SI two, number six, four points.
Kind of like when I played basketball in middle school. I made the first cut, and the second cut, but not the third cut.
Okay.
So then I played baseball.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, who else has...
I'd like to propose another...
Angelina?
Yes.
You have one.
SI one, number two, and combine SI three, number four.
All right.
They're both about affordable housing.
So number two in SI one, this is Angelina's recommendation, number two is prior, and I don't know what page it's on, because I don't have that in front of me, can you tell me what page it's on, for people? Page six, number two, prioritize very low income housing, develop downtown local density bonus program greater than the state currently allows, and, number four, on SI three, LHTF grant funding for affordable housing preservation. Do you all feel comfortable combining those two, or is there any reason not to?
It, it is difficult to find them across the pages. Kathy, would you mind re...
Oh, sure.
Saying that one more time.
Yeah, sorry. All right, so we're looking at SI one, number two. Those of you that have the sheets, can you find it and tell me what page it's on, so people can follow? Okay.
So Kathy, maybe, maybe I can help with that.
Yes, thank you.
So if you take SI one, number two, and combine it with SI three, number four, they can go together, but just, so the council knows, the expectation is, those are completely two different tasks, with, with different budgets, we can include those, and as we come back with a work program to achieve that goal, you know, this would be phased, right? So I think, I think number four is easier than actually number two, SI one two, because that's, that one two requires significant work, both legal and nexus studies as required by the law, and so that's...
Perhaps I could explain a little bit, Tom.
And then, I haven't ignored you, Gina, next, you're going right to...
But I need to be clear, and Joan can help me. SI two, we have to do a nexus study? SI one, sorry, SI one, goal two, we have to do a nexus study and, and a significant amount of work to be legal under the state of California, and that's probably, you know, six to nine months more...
And I think we already had a lot of that done, when we discussed this before.
I'd appreciate it if you wouldn't interrupt, and I will call on you since Tom finishes.
We have, we have, we have not had it done, nor did we ever commence work on that nexus study for low income housing above the 15% density bonus that the council adopted last year. So this is, and, and Councilmember Feng can explain more, but I, I understand, we want to go above and beyond that, and we want to incentivize local density bonus programs, for housing above what the state allows, and there's just studies that have to go into that, to make sure that when we, when we do that, and we have an ordinance requiring it, that we're, we satisfy the, the legal requirements.
And would you please speak also to the LHTF grant funding?
Yeah, so I think, let me just clarify that, so the public understand what each of these work entails, and what it intends to achieve, and the work that is involved, and what the impact is. For SI three, number four, the LHTF grant funding is a local housing trust fund, this is being done in conjunction with the Heart Board, which I serve as one part of the board member. The application process was actually completed, it's just a matter of submitting it, when we have a certified housing element, and when we score high enough, and last time we looked, we're very close, that we will be able to get state grant funding to help, to help us make progress in, in doing preservation of permanently deeded BMR housing. And, and that process itself, it's, I would say, 90% completed, it's just a matter of getting the application submitted, when the housing element is adopted. So it's basically state free money. It would be, you know, incumbent upon us to actually getting it done, minimal effort. In terms of the low income housing with the local density bonus program, there are other jurisdictions within the Bay Area has already enacted ordinance such as this, there is, there are models at which we could reference to, to make it easier for us in terms of the legislative work. Some amount of research will need to be completed, and some of that has arrived, part of my interns in my office have already committed some of the work, but there are jurisdictions who has a comprehensive legislation on all of this, which we can leverage majority of it. And the impact of it is that we can incentivize development in key strategic areas, such as our downtown Broadway, El Camino Real, so that we can retake and gain back our local control, and assure the development community the entitlement process and timeline and remove risk.
Yes, Gina?
Thank you, Councilmember Feng, that's very... We have to stop using acronyms here, for public's sake. It's just, I mean, like, hey, but you defined all those, and I greatly appreciate it. So if you are recommending the combination of those two, because as you said, we're almost there with the one, so it wouldn't be that big a deal.
The LHTF grant funding is actually completed, the application.
Okay, so let me repeat that, thank you. So if Councilmember Feng is recommending the combination of those two, I think that's a good idea, and I would also wonder why we can't build on our last nexus study, to, you know, not recreate the wheel entirely, but build on that. So it sounds like it would be reasonable, because as you said, the one is, we're almost there, so not that great an expenditure, but we receive the same goals that we are trying to do here, and I will emphasize what Councilmember Feng said, unless we are able to provide those low, extra low, we have no control, and we really need to get that control back. We also need that kind of housing, so I do think that's important, so I would agree with that.
If I could put in a suggestion?
Let's let Ann go.
If I may, real quick, from a staff perspective, just to clarify, we have not done a nexus study for this. We've done nexus studies for water, sewer, 15% affordable, but we have not done a nexus study that's required for this. I just want to make sure that you know, and that you're clear on that, so it's not just as easy as saying we've done it, this is, this is different. It's okay, I'm just letting you know the information.
My, my suggestion was, as he just said, we have one for 15%, so I'm wondering if we can't leverage that. We did one for 15%, we're trying to get to 20. Thank you.
Ann?
Kind of a process question. Right now, what council's being asked to do is, which ones can we merge together, taking the 28 and bringing it down to a smaller number? So what I think I'm hearing is strategic initiative one, number two, and Councilman Feng gave a fantastic explanation, thank you, and that's adding strategic initiative number three, number four...
Correct.
To that. I have a question, City Manager, because we had talked about this ahead of time, I know Councilwoman Pappen and I really pushed for the developer fees for childcare, climate resiliency work, and public art, but you told me it needed a new nexus study. If we have to do a nexus study for this housing, can we add those three developer fees, or is that a different nexus study? You can tell me no.
No, no, we can, I just want the council to know, there's a lot of work involved.
Okay, but if we're doing one nexus study, could we add a few more things in there?
But a nexus study for art is different than a nexus study for childcare, it's different than nexus study for climate resiliency, and it's different than, think of them as four independent studies that need to occur.
But in terms of process, would it be one RFP, or are they three completely different types of, or four different consult, I'm looking at Andy, you're saying four different consultants do that kind of, wow.
Yeah, I, I mean, there's, there's pretty, it's pretty specialized.
Okay.
But there are some economic firms out there that probably could, I mean, we won't really know until we scope it out.
And then the other thing is, if there is a nexus study goal, these are the required nexus studies we need in the city, number one is to make sure we keep local control, and we get our low, low affordables built, then down there would someday be climate change, but it would be under that heading. Is that a way that we could structure it that makes sense for staff?
Trying to figure out...
Because I wrote the one, I think Gina and I wrote the one...
I mean, there's...
Is that more if we did a long-term strategic plan?
Yeah, I gotta be realistic, I don't think, we can try, I, I mean, look, these are goals, and then we'll come back with a work plan, and say, okay, task one, task two, and allocate. So I think that, yes, a nexus study in terms of the methodology...
No, I found it.
Is, is standard, in terms of the law, it's just the variables and, and information that goes into, like, for example, childcare, we have to look at inventory, all the childcare within the region, all the childcare opportunities within the city, what, what the capacity is, are they 100% occupied, is there a waiting list, you know, just, those are some of the variables.
I just, just, because we're not defending each one right now, but I think, I don't know if it was me or Gina, that wrote strategic initiative five, number five, and I am happy, if it's me, to say, it can be a subset underneath what Councilman Feng wants, under there, it could be the third bullet point, if we can get to it, as a way to kind of shrink these down into a fashion that we might have a finished project of 12.
I'm okay with that, I just need to manage the expectations of the council.
I understand, it may not happen in the next fiscal year.
That's okay, as long as you understand that there may be multiple work tasks, and multiple, multiple line items to achieve that one objective, that it's not, you know, all, all one, they'll be phased.
You're taking three goals and making it one.
We can manage to, yeah, you're taking three or four goals and putting it in as one, and I'm okay with that. And then when we come back, we'll just say, okay, here's task one, we can get that done in this budget year, task two and three, we can get done in fiscal '24, '25. I'm, I'm fine with that, as long as...
I mean, I understand that, and to council and to the public, Kathy and I had talked about, we can't get all of this done in fiscal year '23, '24, but just like we did last year with recycled water, we're getting it in the pipeline, and it may be short term, medium term, long term, so if this helps us structure, it may give us fewer choices next year.
Yeah, I think that's right.
That's right.
But at least it's keeping it, and it's helping staff know that, what could be on their plate coming up.
Okay, we have Angelina...
So then I'm willing to give up my strategic initiative number five, number five, if it can get merged into the one that we just talked about.
Okay, we have two more people that would like to speak about this, Angelina, and then Maurice.
I was just going to suggest, if initiative three, number four, is already a work in progress, do we want to move it to the work in progress slides? It's already happening, we don't even need to vote on it?
Yeah, it's actually done.
No?
Well, it's done at the heart level, is it done at the city level?
What was the question?
So, Ms. Cahillan saying, the LHTF grant funding process, it's actually, is it already work in progress? Actually, Heart Board Armando has already completed the application for us, we actually had a score sheet, we haven't submitted it, because we're waiting for a housing element to be adopted.
And I'm fine with that, it's just, I'll look to Andy, there, there's just, there's work that goes into that.
Understood.
They may, they may have it all done, but we haven't really...
Yeah, sure.
You know, so I just want to make sure...
Yep.
Because I've, I've said from day one, realistic goals, realistic expectations, and I want to make sure that we can actually do what we can do, and if this is a priority, we can make it work, definitely make it work, and we'll come back with that solidified work program, like I said, and then be able to manage it, right? And then we're all working together and say, okay, yeah, I get it, step one, step two.
One of the things that you all might consider, because really, what you're talking about is taking three things and making them one goal, would we, could we then come up with a total of nine goals instead of 12?
That's, that's what my comment was going to be, because we're not...
Oh, good, thank you Maurice.
Just combining things, for the sake of combining, we're still, there's still money connected to it, there's still workforce, everything, time, everything's still connected. If that's the case, let's just say, hey, either prioritize, and we're going, those we're going to make it anyway, or combine them, and we just lower it from 12 to eight, and then just do that, but this is, we're going in a big circle...
That's reasonable, because...
Not getting anywhere.
And, and the reality is, everybody in this room cares deeply about some things more than others, and we can't do them all immediately, and so you and I talked about a three to five-year plan, which is what you're saying, is we can put them, and so that, that's kind of where we were headed today with after the vote, to put some of those things in the parking lot, of this is going to follow up, this is coming, but it's not coming this year.
Just on that, so Vice Mayor, I understand what you're saying, but if we're looking at these ones that...
They may have it all done, but we haven't really, you know, so I just want to make sure.
Yep.
Because I've said from day one, realistic goals, realistic expectations, and I want to make sure that we can actually do what we can do. And if this is a priority, we can make it work, definitely make it work, and we'll come back with that solidified work program, like I said, and then be able to manage it, right? And then we're all working together and say, okay, yeah, I get it, step one, step two.
One of the things that you all might consider, because really what you're talking about is taking three things and making them one goal, would we, could we then come up with a total of nine goals instead of 12?
That's what my comment was gonna be, because we're not...
Oh, good, thank you, Maurice.
Just combining things for the sake of combining, we're still, there's still money connected to it, there's still workforce, everything, time, everything's still connected. If that's the case, let's just say, hey, either prioritize them, those we're gonna make it anyway, or combine them, and we just lower it from 12 to 8, and then just do that. But this is, we're going in a big circle.
That's reasonable, because...
Not getting anywhere.
And the reality is, everybody in this room cares deeply about some things more than others, and we can't do them all immediately. And so you and I talked about a three-to-five-year plan, which is what you're saying, is we can put them... And so that, that's kind of where we were headed today with after the vote, to put some of those things in the parking lot, of this is gonna follow up. This is coming, but it's not coming this year.
Just on that, so Vice Mayor, I understand what you're saying, but if we're looking at these ones that all require a NEXUS study, it's gonna be the same staff that do the NEXUS study, but it is gonna be done over time. So your question of staffing and budget, some of these, I mean, sadly, for the one that I really wanted, which is a climate resiliency fund and a developer fee, is gonna wait another year. I get that.
And that's what I'm saying, but if it jumps to possibly three years or four years, that's not a priority. And that's what I'm trying to say, so we need to understand what goes into putting these together, that it's not just saying, okay, it might get done in a year, it won't get done in a year if we're talking about money, if we're talking about workload, and we're talking about the time that we actually want it to get done. If it's a priority, I'm sure a priority is something we want done in a year.
Unless we do structure it saying that we've got, let's just using this one as an example, NEXUS study, the most important thing is maintaining local control and building housing. That's number one. Year two is whatever the other one was. Year three is getting these missing developer fees that other cities have, that's why I thought it was fairly easy. The NEXUS study's already been done by the county, but apparently it's not, it's not easy. So we put that into year two or three, but it's there, and to be honest, for the art fund, by then, culture arts, we'll build the art master plan, which will support the creation of the fees, but we can be work, our independent committees and commissions can be working on some of this, too.
And what I'm hearing from you is not an annual priority setting, goal setting. I hear a strategic planning or a blue-ribbon committee saying, hey, this is our strategic plan, year one, all the way out to four or five. Those are two different processes.
That's true.
If we're talking about prioritizing for the year for our staff, then these are two different conversations we're having. So maybe the conversation should be, let's get a blue-ribbon committee together and start a strategic plan for years out, and how these all connect together. But this isn't for me.
My recommendation is this.
Right.
My recommendation is, first of all, if you look at this number four in SI 3, it's six points up till today, and the number two in SI 1 is eight points. So you all feel strongly about these? It's likely we can combine them, and they can, it will end up one of them.
So...
But I think if you start to... I may be wrong, this is your business. If you start adding then the arts and the childcare and so forth, you're taking housing and you're putting other things in, and I realize part of the systems are the same.
So Kathy and I have no problem with combining SI 1, 2, and SI 3, 4 together, and no problem combining...
SI 5, 5.
No, I was gonna go back to SI 2, 6, and the...
We just took it out.
Oh, SI 2, 6, and SI 1, 3.
Yeah, part of, part of three, yeah, correct. The east side specific plan, SI 1, 2, yeah.
It's different than Maurice's concern, because really, six and three are the same thing. Truly, they're the same thing, one just to break, one into more detail.
As a policymaker's perspective, I get that, but for creating the plan and everything that goes into it, and this is what we'll do, and then I'll shut up, we'll take those, whatever the priorities are, and then we're gonna put a work plan with tasks and budgets and stuff, and then so that way we can make sure we get it all. And as you all said, it may, just like those goals there to the left, you know, we started those, and those are in process.
And City Manager, if I can just help perhaps sort of guide it along a little bit, there could also be phases at which a certain initiative progress, as it moves over from one phase to another, there might be initial phase, and then there may be a phase two, and subsequently, as they progress, right, as budget and time and, you know, staff time allows, you do more.
That's right.
And go deeper into it.
Correct.
Okay, yes, and let's try to move on, so...
Actually, Kathy, I think this is good work.
Okay, good.
I mean, I think it's helping us all understand year 1, 2, 3 on that. So again, this is another...
I'm just afraid the Vice Mayor's gonna say complete.
Gina, but I'm pretty sure it's mine. If you look on the handout, page 8, slide 16, SI 5, here's the tough thing, because I look at this as a way to get the city more money, the developer plan to measure cut-through traffic and approach the transportation agencies for more parity in road funding. It is also a set, it is also similar to SI, the work in progress, SI 3, number 2. And City Manager, tell me if I'm wrong, I know we talked about this earlier, that it's slightly different, and for the public, we get less money than Hillsborough for road repairs, because they have more linear miles and because they did a cut-through traffic study and proved to the powers that be that their roads are more used. Millbury is most definitely a city that has people driving through it. If we did the study, we could get more road money and theoretically move from having the second-worst roads in the county to maybe the third or fourth-worst roads. I'm sorry to say that, but we're down in the bottom there. So, but I'm trying to, I understand I'm trying to combine to make it the 28 down to 12, but do you see that there could be a subset, or should it stand on its own?
Well, again, if you look at the notes under SI 5, 7, it is related to SI 3, goal number 2, but only in terms of traffic calming, that we're already doing. If you want to introduce as a priority studies for cut-through traffic and all that, we can do it, but it's just not part of our work in progress. So it could be added, but that would be one of the, one of the priorities, right, of the county, that you would select as a council.
I tried. I mean, I'm happy to keep it separate and see where it goes.
Gina?
So clarification on...
Your mic, please.
You said, I didn't get that close anymore. Okay, so clarification on two points. As relates to cut-through traffic, that kind of is on the lines of grade separation, should we get there, because that's gonna be the sort of analysis. Second question here is that we had a big discussion on SI 6, number 5, which is the five acres. Now, I'm just wondering, because we don't have much control, if that is a simple objection and not a big deal? Is Flight SFO plans to fill in five acres of mud flats? Is that, you know, is that a big deal? Are we just writing huge objections to SFO? Because again, we don't have control, I'm just asking for clarification here. So if somebody could provide that, I'd appreciate it.
And whoever wrote this?
I wrote it.
Okay, please.
So it's a good question, Councilwoman. It is a big deal in terms of...
I thought it was a big deal, that's why I'm asking.
It's a big deal in terms of noise. If you fill in that five acres, too, you narrow the pathway of the bay, and we're a tsunami zone now right there, so it would narrow the trough that tsunami water. I find it hard to believe that we'll ever have a tsunami, but the Hayward Falls is gonna go.
So I'm just asking how this would be approached.
Sadly, the EIR is gonna come out, the final EIR, just like high-speed rail, but this one's gonna come out in the fall, and it's gonna say, we can't help it, we're more important than Millbury, and Millbury should tough it.
Well, my point is, if we should be on the record, and if that's all this is, then why aren't we doing it?
Well, I think we are. The City Manager wrote a letter, I wrote a letter, highlighting all the points, in a way like what we did to create where we are with high-speed rail. But I would wish that one shoreline, rather than just writing a letter saying, we hope we continue working with them, that we better position ourselves to speak up to, speak up for ourselves and get what we need.
And excuse me, we will get to individual items for explanations and debate, right now?
I needed explanation on this, so that's...
Kathy, what it could do, here's the problem, we have the Millbury Station specific plan and Site 7, which is one point of negotiation with wetlands, could be something that comes up on the east side, specific plan, if we're allowed to loop that in, and I, but it's really two different specific plans in there, but they're right next to each other. So that's another way of addressing the five acres. But no, we have to stay on it, and that means staff has to read it, and probably we're gonna have to have an attorney on that.
Okay, we're not doing what we had discussed, and I'd like to get back to it, which is the only purpose right now, we will get to these further explanations and debate, but the only thing right now is, is there anything else that we have not discussed that should be combined? Otherwise, I believe we can move on to, yes?
I think 9 and 10, I'm sorry, SI 4, page 6. I do believe to some extent, 9 and, though I do not, not on board with the protocols and patients, to a certain extent, those can be...
Do you all have those? Do you need me to read them?
Yeah.
These are SI 4...
SI 4.
9 and 10.
9 and 10.
Cahalan and I suggested that as well, so...
Everyone think they should be combined?
Well, I want to have discussion, from my view. So 10, council development norm setting, meeting decorum, I think does fit with 9. Trust building, in terms of the city council agrees to have some team-building sessions and that type of thing this year, you know, as a goal. I would like to hear that from the council.
So, shall we combine them?
So I would think, yeah, 9 and 10 relate other than the desire, or we can have the discussion, right, that, you know, does that include then some team-building sessions and bringing in a consultant to do that? And if you combine that in there, and that's part of 9, then yeah, you can, 9 and 10 could be combined.
Would everyone agree to that?
Well, so I would say, number 9, I think there were some discussions on that in the previous meeting, it's past Tuesday. I would certainly love to understand the scope of this. You know, a lot had been said about council protocol, rotations, nepotism, I don't know, I'm trying to get some understandings of that. I think it's important for the public to understand what entails in all of this as we embark on this discussion.
But today is not the day for that, but rather, if you vote for this, then that will occur, is that correct?
Well, I think the public needs to know what that means.
And so do we, I think, to his point, that if...
Sure.
A couple of council members are like, hey, I don't, I'm not, I'm on board with 90% of this, but X that out, then that's something we should discuss.
So who put this one in? Whose is this goal?
Okay, council protocol right now is by votes. So on the election year where three council members are elected, one and their district may never be a goal. So when I've been out talking to other cities that have gone to districts, they simply rotate the numbers around. You've got five districts it rotates around, six districts, seven districts you rotate it around. So that's something, though, that would be discussed, and come back as a staff report of various ways that could roll that out, so that every district has that opportunity to be represented by a mayor on that. Along with that is just how to make sure that we represent a district, but we represent everyone, too, on that. So that's part of that. The protocols, for example, say that, here's an example, Vice Mayor, I'm termed out in a year and a half, I'm emergency services, right now our protocol says you can't listen into that meeting. I would like you listening into that meeting so that you're ready to step in when I'm gone. So we have to change that protocol on that. The nepotism is when you have multiple members of a family serving in multiple layers of government. What I get from the public is, I'm afraid to go to that committee because I'm afraid if I say something, then a council member will hold it against me. So looking at what nepotism means, it's, I was talking to a couple of other people, it's historically, council members' children have served on the youth advisory committee, maybe that's one where it's more flexible, but when you've got husbands and wives serving on the main committees, or parents and children, adult children, it's nepotism.
Okay, so here's one...
And then Gina had her hand up.
Gina, do you mind if I, and then I'll make sure we'll give an opportunity for that. Many of folks know that I used to serve on the planning commission before I got elected to the council. To that end, in terms of the nepotism description here, I had the unique and distinctive privilege to serve with Kathy Quitt for three and a half years. Now, she's been on the planning commission for over 20 years, and that historical and institutional knowledge is invaluable to our city. And I'm grateful to have that opportunity to serve next to her, and for Dan and Kathy to have dedicated their whole life to serving our city. I think it is our gift that we have elected official who would allow their other family member to serve on important commissions. So to that end, I think we owe these folks a great deal of gratitude. I don't think anybody else, in my opinion, or in one that I've spoken to, have expressed any uneasiness of it. I mean, I've served with Kathy for a long time, and it's been great. I think we're grateful for a community who willing to come together and serve everyone, and we've got folks, you know, who like to quit family, who has dedicated their whole life to serving our community. I think that's, that's a wonderful thing. I would, I just want to make sure we point out these things so that we understand the context of this conversation.
Thank you, Anders. And Gina, I just want to point out one thing to you all, so you're aware of this. Number 10 says council development norm setting. To me, there is no reason, we're getting into the weeds here about, you're actually arguing what you want to do as one of your goals.
Okay, let me clarify here, because this is important to us, and I do agree with Councilmember Feng here. Quigs have served on both parks and, I just, I just disagree with this point, because we, it is very difficult to get community involvement when we have people who have dedicated to being involved. This is kind of a deal breaker, that we should remove that part and go on with the rest, and if can, come up later in meeting decorum if so desired. But it is, I think, significant that we recognize the commitment, service of so many people here, and, you know, you're gonna hold their marital status or family against, I just, I don't think that's...
Okay, I am a little concerned that what we're doing is having a discussion now that you would have if you accepted this, if you voted for this. Whereas you can have an update protocols, nepotism protocol ordinance, and that update might be no change. You don't have to say yes to it. You're having, trying to have that argument now, and I don't think this is the appropriate time to have it. It's really, we were discussing, should they be combined? Just because it says nepotism protocol, everyone could vote later, nepotism's fine. What the heck, it works, or not.
I totally agree, but the other day when we were talking about, I think it was like undergrounding of the BART, and we were like, hey, everything else is good but that. So that was a deal breaker, and I think to that point, before we even get up to vote, without us having this short conversation, it may be a little longer than on, but I think just having that conversation might change someone's vote.
Okay.
So I think, what we're hearing, what I'm hearing, is let's take that off, because then it won't be, it won't cloud the vote. If that's there, that's fine, if you're willing to remove it, or we just leave it as is and deal with the outcome.
And put team building on number 10?
No, I think what he...
You're saying?
I think what they're saying is...
No, the nepotism part, I think that's the contentious part, because I, too, agree that it's very, it's honorable to serve your community, whether it's my child, house, and so if they wanted to do that, I wouldn't want to be a barrier to them serving their community the way that I do.
So since this is mine, oh, go ahead.
To summarize, it sounds like 9 and 10 can be combined if you take your black pen and cross out nepotism protocol.
Well, it's mine, so for the greater good, I will tell you that I have people that do not speak out at committee and commissions, because they are afraid of that structure. But for today's purpose and for our goals, I'm happy to remove it, but I think it's a real thing, and I think it is one of the things that prevents people from applying to serve on committees or commissions, when they think that there's an inner group in the city of Millbury that has controlled things for decades. So there's two sides of that, and yet, the public needs to speak up more on that. of that. And yet, the public needs to speak up more on that. But for the greater good, more important is making sure that we are fair and equitable in the mayor rotation.
Okay. And there's no reason, as far as I know, I don't know if it's a legal matter to say that specifically, in combining them, taking out nepotism protocol or ordinance, and still having norm setting, you could have that conversation.
I cross out nepotism. We have to look at our protocols. There's a bunch of protocols that are hurting us. Like the example I gave, put protocol review on that. Like only one, you can't, you have to leave the room if BPAC ends and Park and Rec is there, even though Park and Rec is going to talk BPAC. But I'm not the, I'm the liaison to BPAC, and Councilwoman Kalen is there, but we literally can't be in the same room according to our protocols. You have to look at that.
Okay. You guys are still trying to get everything, you know. All right. So, I know, I think it's very impressive. So now, would you like to hear public comment, or would you like to pitch your two favorites? Do we hear from the public?
From the public?
Okay.
All right.
And they've got three minutes.
Three minutes.
And for those that need them, speaker slips are available over here against the wall on the left of the door.
Marian, why don't you come on up?
Yeah, can we get on with it? Thank you.
And per Marian's slip, she's got comments, because I asked her to do it this way, so I apologize. One, two, three, four, but now it's in your shoes, and we haven't started the clock yet.
I'm going to make a small comment about mayor rotation. We had a district election district, but we had half and half. We had half district election, councilman, half another. So I respect, you all consider, finish up while we, while those two are not on the district election first, then I think go with the mayor's just rotation. It's a wonderful idea. Okay? That's all I have coming there. Now, don't count a minute. Okay. Now I'm doing five, initiative five. Okay. Millbury has a very, very, not very attracting downtown area. Not just downtown, even the entire Al Camino, that to me. So in order for our businesses to, to generate more revenue, they generate more revenue, city got more revenue and more traffic, and then more in fame about our city, I would suggest our city do some investment. We need parking spaces. I want that parking lot next to Magnolia built. It took for six, six, 16 years, 17 years, never built. And then I also would like you to beautify the downtown area. I was just talking to the mayor. When I take my mother to downtown, I could not even not holding her because uneven pavement. She could trip. I have a friend who's only in the 63. He, he walks every day on downtown. He only tripped three times. And he did not hold any city or any merchant responsible for his fall. But that's telling you, we need to do something. You cannot always blame the merchant have an empty storefront. If we providing a better infrastructure, I believe there's more chances they got tenants. Okay? And then look at it, look at Burningame Avenue. Do you really see an empty store from there for long? Not really. People dying to come in here. And we want the Millbury to be that too. I want different kind of cuisine, different kind of appeal store, anything. Okay? As long as we can help our downtown merchant, that's five of your goal. You got to make the downtown beautiful. You have to make more parking spaces. Okay? Think about it. The biotype park is coming. How many of those people coming over? We don't want to just go to Panda Express every day, right? They all end up to be in the hospital, eating all the deep fried food. So please make it to, make it to your initiative to make downtown a little bit better and support it. Oh, and beside that, we, hold on, we really need a powerful business association. I call the chamber, nobody answer my call. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kong. Alice Quan. Alice, are you going to want the translation tool? And can it be Mandarin? Okay.
So first, I'll comment, that's translation tool doesn't work.
Well, we're still, I would just, let's keep practicing with it. Let's
Okay.
Artificial intelligence will get it training. This is not your time.
It's okay. If you
If we could restart the clock.
If you give me two times, three minutes, and then I talk in Chinese and English, English, broken English. Want me to do that? I can do that.
Start the, let's restart the time.
My primary dialect is Cantonese.
I know your, I know your Mandarin is
I can talk Mandarin if you want to test.
We'll try Mandarin.
I can talk both.
And we appreciate you trying.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You did a good job today, Mayor. One thing is personal, okay? But today you did a good job. Oops.
Restart her time.
Yeah.
I love the compliment, but restart her time.
Okay, anyway, now, even though I'm
Are we, it's okay to go in English too?
I think it's fine, three minutes.
After, after you.
Okay. Well, I'm reading the translation. I can only say, Ms. Quan, I have a neck injury that means sometimes I can't use my hands. So I tried to use Dragon software when I was still working in the business world.
It's okay.
And it takes a long learning curve for these programs to catch up.
You can put it down, then I can correct if the translation is not good.
I think the translation is good.
Okay, then I don't
You think it was pretty close?
I think it's pretty descriptive.
I don't want to occupy too much time, but I can talk eight hours. I should talk eight hour continuous day.
And just to be fair, yeah, just to be fair, everybody get three minutes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you all.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Quan. Mr. Freeman, uh, Mr. Peng, sorry. Freeman Peng.
Thank you for the opportunity. After I had to review the goal, and I think it's a little bit disappointing. I've been trying to help, trying to get involved in the community. Possibly people know me and will know that I'm trying to push something. It's like, how are we going to connect? What? I think the root cause for the city sometimes is about how we are going to generate more sales tax and all that kind of stuff. How are we going to attract people, like from labor city, and they can spend money here? I think those are the root cause for many problems that's here. But it's a little bit disappointed that when I review all this goal, it seems to me it's logo talking about that. Maybe I'm too simple or too lavish. But I still think is that it's important for the city. Why we have the empty store, why we have this and why we have all that? It's because our business, look at the retail. They're trying to, they're struggling to survive. So what is the root cause for that? Is it we don't have enough affordable housing, low market rate housing? Or, you know, like, what is your priority? I think the priority, one of the priority should have is to see how we're going to bring more business, bring more traffic to the city, so that we can compete with the Burningame, with the Hamphloron, with all that, so that the city can generate more tax. And also is that the resident, not necessarily needs to pay the highest order bill maybe in the nation. So I don't need three minutes, but I think that's very important for me to express again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peng. City clerk, I don't have anything else, no other hand, no other paper slips. Do we have anybody online?
We do not have any hands raised, but for anybody that's calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand.
And we'll just give it a few seconds. And I would remind the public that we're setting up an order, but we're not done. This is going to come back to at least one more, if not other city council meetings, and then everything that goes to the goals will come back as staff reports in the future, and there'll be a public process for it. So this is not the end all for all. And then, to be honest, sometimes we do the best with our goals, and something like COVID will come in and completely destroy what we thought we'd get done one year. So there's a little flexibility in there. Have I given enough time? Build up that space? Marian, I can't. But you can come and reach to us. For the public, what cut through traffic means, so we have SFO, and we have the end of the line BART station and a Caltrain station, and people can drive up 280, get off at Millbury Avenue or Larkspur, come down Helen Drive, come down Millbury Avenue, come down Murchison, very fast, trying to get to their appointments on time, their train or plane on time, and they cut through our neighborhoods. It can also mean that somebody living on the north side of Millbury but goes to Mills High School is cutting through a neighborhood. So different neighborhoods are subjected to more or less traffic depending on where they are. Thank you. Good question.
Pitch your, pitch your favorites, and then we'll vote. Okay? Who would like to go first? Are you ready, Gina?
All right, I am going to go with number, I'm sorry, strategic initiative, number one. Number two, as we have combined it with those Nexus groupings. I do believe this is extremely important to our future. We do need low, very low housing, and the law has restricted what we can do. If Millbury is ever to get to, hopefully, the number one, as I said, we really want to make sure we maintain control of what happens here. It is a kind of free ride for developers at this point in time. We have obligations that the state has imposed. So I'm really hoping that we can prioritize this, increase, do our Nexus study, increase the elements for 15 to 20%, and move on with so many other things. So this just kind of puts a stranglehold on our city unless we do something. We have a lot of great things here. That would be, we only get one at this point. So many others are great. So that's it.
You. Now you can pitch your top two.
Great. Okay, so then I'll go to number one there. The architectural designs, once again, we
Would you tell us which number this is, please?
Yeah, this is strategic initiative one again, but number one here. And I'm hoping that we are not recreating the wheel. A lot of other jurisdictions have done this. I'm hoping we can take what they have done, we can incorporate it into our design standards, and then really establish a quality product here, easy for people who want to come in and develop. Guidelines will be set, no questions asked. Here's what the expectations are for Millbury. Again, I am hoping we can, and I, what do we got? What does NEPA mean here for the public? So I really hesitate. As we move forward here, I wish we could do away with all these anagrams so the public can understand what direction we're heading in. So I think one and two here are very important to really putting Millbury together, having Millbury set the standards, but also making it a lot easier for people who come here to understand what's happening. It'll streamline a whole bunch of other processes and keep us out of court, keep everybody out of court as we move forward. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Maurice, are you ready? Who would like to go? Go for it.
Thank you. Much has been said about the local density bonus program and the LHTF, so I'll leave it to the good judgment of this council, because I think that certainly is important. One thing that I want to talk a little bit about right now, take this moment, is based on, and I hope Wortley was able to translate a little better. One of our previous public speaker has came in earlier, Lilian, has spoken about how she has a house that has been vacant for over 10 years, not so much by choice, but by the fact that she is trying to obtain entitlement and permits to remodel a house and unable to. And it's been many years where she sees no progress being made as part of that process. So that's why on SI four, number six, and I've been pushing this for, since the day I joined the council, is that we need to have a more streamlining on how permit tracking portal and planning process and building process as well. And that has limited financial and fiscal impact to us. In fact, those fees would be recuperated by the development community as part of their permit fees and technology fees, and yet would create a much needed transparency in this entire process so that the development community and those who wish to obtain a permit, and the business community as well, they've expressed over and over again, as I met with them, the importance of, you know, how can they get a sign up? How can they get an awning up? How can they get, you know, evening permits, whatever that might be. So that, that is exceptionally important as we move forward here. And then there's very, and I've emphasized, very, very limited financial impact. In fact, the development community is more than happy to pay for that. And then on the environmental stewardship, one thing that I think it's extremely important
Which initiative and number is this?
SI six. Number nine, the irrigation metering, and also the onsite solar generation. Those are the easy legislative initiative that we can do that would not only make a sizable impact to our environment and and preserving the one of the most valuable resources that is extremely limited, which is drinking water. We all know that, how valuable drinking water is. And to be able to leverage the, um, the recycle water opportunity for toilet flushing, for sprinklers and for irrigations on a separate meter, um, doesn't cost us anything to do it, just the legislation part of it. And then development community would pay for that. Um, again, extremely low revenue impact and budget impact. In fact, we are creating our own demand as we produce recycled water that they become a client to purchase these recycled waters. So I, I think that's an important initiative that we be able to tackle.
Thank you. Angelina, are you ready? Would you rather stand up? Would that be easier for you?
Just for the sake of time, I'll just add, um, a quick two are SI one, two, prioritizing very low income housing. And strategic initiative number five, number three, pursue downtown business association advocating for downtown business improvement district.
Thank you very much. Ready or should we?
I can, um, I have very similar, uh, feelings about items that have already been spoken about. But in addition, um, I'd like to speak to the East Side Specific Plan, SI one, number three. I know that's something big. Um, I know that's more than a single year. Um, but there's a lot happening in that part of the city that is long overdue to be addressed, especially around safety and interagency and, uh, inner city land issues. Um, I think that's really important to get started and not waiting more years to get that going. Um, and then SI five, number three. I think we're hearing a lot from the public and a lot from our businesses, the need to, uh, enhance the downtown area for our businesses.
Thank you. Madam Mayor?
So I have been trying for seven years now to get the city to do trees, and it sounds very tree huggerish. But the federal government, the UN, the world believes that the number one thing that we can do, aside from not driving gas-powered cars anymore, is to plant trees to absorb carbon. When you look at Milbury and you look at our, um, local climate, we do not have air conditioning, and trees can do multiple things. We've had a committee working on trees for years but have never really funded it. Now, the city has been planting trees, which is lovely and fantastic. And the public loves planting trees, and we had the Tree Grove. But we don't have a plan. So since all of these tree things are written by me, I'm happy to squish them all together, under environment on that. Um, but trees can also add 10% to your property value. They can negate the need for air conditioning, which uses electricity. Uh, they can, uh, slow traffic down, believe it or not. Trees actually cross, uh, subject areas. So I'm going to have to advocate for trees on, on that. And I would say that SI six, number one, had three points. And SI two, number four, tree inventory, I'm not sure it got any, but I'm willing to take off the tree inventory if we can just come up with a plan and get the public to work with us. The tree ordinance is supposed to be in fiscal year 2223. I've been promised it's going to be coming in months. Um, but MCAC is, has been waiting for permission to start looking at ways we can better maintain our street trees. And they need this goal so that they can do their work and bring it back to council on that. The, the other one, um, I'm going to advocate for, well frankly, I, I don't see why we get two when we've got six initiatives, because we may end up with an initiative with nothing. And we really, which doesn't make sense then.
Well, if that happens, we will talk about it and see what the highest one is. See if we can add it or put it in the park.
The other one would be, I strongly feel that we have neglected the East Side for my entire life, as someone who grew up here. And we need to be looking at the East Side. It is now a equity focus area. There are some tools we have to develop to bring resources into that community. It is the nexus of all of our environmental problems. Every one of them, they get more than anywhere else, including at-grade crossings, et cetera. So East Side and trees, um, I definitely think we need a BID. I don't think we're going to get to a business improvement district for downtown because the owners, the property owners, can get more advantage keeping a building empty. They can get that kind of tax benefit than in putting something in there. So the concept of an empty storefront ordinance will help get that BID improved. And I do not think we're going to get there. We didn't get there before. And it didn't matter COVID, it doesn't matter whatever the economy is doing, the two fit part and parcel together.
I have a question for clarification. You said you would give up trees, which is SI six, number six.
The more complicated one. I tried to go more detailed, so people had an idea.
Is that number four? I'm not sure.
No, 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 it's still here.
It's SI six?
SI six.
Number?
Oh, SI six, seven is the one that got three points. Getting the public involved in tree planting and understanding the value of trees. And SI two.
I don't have SI six up here. I mean, I have SI six, but I don't want to go to six.
Where was it? Um, I have SI two, page, uh, two, number, um, slide four. SI two, number four. This is the more expensive way, which is to do an RFP, to do a tree inventory. If we can't afford a tree inventory, if we can just allow our culture enhancement, our environment committee to work on a tree plan, come up with the tree species that work per microclimate.
You want to keep this one, the RFP?
I keep this one, but let's simplify it in terms of budget.
Simplify it by taking the tree ordinance down.
City Manager, remove the RFP.
Would you come up here and show me? Because I don't have what you have in front of you, and I'm. So. There is no number. Elaine, I think we need your help. Okay. Oh, there was a number seven. We took out all those zeros. I think she'll give this up.
Manager, is there one that encompasses trees? See how I cleverly find more time? SI six, six? Ah, okay. Which one? Okay. So then I'm advocating for SI six, six.
I think public comment, unless the council wants to open it back up, is closed. Based on the rule. But if the council has desire to hear from the public, that's why, sorry, Marian, but don't cheat the rule messenger. So again.
It's still up here. Yeah.
Kathy, two dots. Green is three, blue is two. So green is your number one, and blue is number two.
City Manager, the, can you help me find the goal? Oh, um, Vice Mayor? Vice Mayor? Vice Mayor, the one that we were just talking about is strategic initiative six, number four. No, setting annual goals and accountability and, and direction annually. Well, it really. He was, he'd come to so many things. Asking everyone to go back and use the mic.
Okay, sorry, you all. All right, Angelina's checking to make sure I don't mess up my addition. All right, we've got, uh, number one in SI one gets two points. SI two gets six points. Now, just remember that we've combined SI two and crossed off number six. And we're going to go back and revisit. Don't, don't panic when you go through this. Uh, number three, three points. And this one, East Side Specific Plan, is combined with SI two, number six. I did this wrong, I'm sorry. Go back to number two.
No, you didn't. It just go down to the very bottom.
Right, and this one's gone.
Correct.
All right, just moving along based on this. Okay, uh, number SI four, streamlined permit tracking portal for planning and building, gets five points. And? And SI five gets four points. Number three, pursue downtown business associating, association advocating for downtown and business improvement. Number four in SI five, create empty storefront ordinance, et cetera, two points. And SI six, number six, complete tree ordinance for city and heritage trees with map, three points. Now, if we just looked at those and took your first two choices, we will have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, pardon me, seven. So I think perhaps we should do that. If we look at it this way, number one originally had eight points. Right, so now you got 10 here. Number two originally had eight points. I'm sorry, what did I do? Two plus eight, 10 points, pardon me. Thank you. I'm getting dyslexic in my old age. I, I don't care. I think six and eight is 14 points. Number three, East Side Specific Plan, now has three now. We've added, it originally had five. And we've also added SI two, number six, which we just, it's just a subset of that. It's not, but it did originally have four points. So let's just do this, let's do the math. Eight and four is 12. Okay, are you, are you catching me on stuff? I can see you analytically looking at this, and that's good.
I just have a question. As I look at this, this gives us one to two, or one to three in each category? And then we have two categories that don't have anything?
Well, let's just see. Let's just see. We're getting data right now. We're gathering data, and then we will look at them. All right? All right, SI four. Although, as you see, SI three is going over to SI one for number two. So you really do, it just depends on how you look at it, because you all, as city council members, filled out the questionnaire and put something here, and someone else put something here. They're now combined. Right? Okay, number five, number six in SI four is five points. It already had five points. So now we've got 10 there. All right? SI five, uh, number three, pursue downtown business association has four. It originally had 10 points. Okay? Number four has two points, originally had six. And number six in SI six has three points. It originally had three. So three plus three. All right, so what I'd like to do before we just pull this all in is say, let's take, let's write down, can you do this, Elaine? Or can, who, can somebody write down the ones that have the highest points? Somebody? Eduardo, somebody? I'll read them. SI one, number two has 14 points. SI 1, number 2, has 14 points. You want to do it over there? Great, that'll be great. Okay, so SI 1, number 2, has 14 points. 14. SI 1, number 3, which also includes SI 2, number 6, has 12 points. Um, SI 5, number 3, has 14 points. Um, SI 4, number 6, has 10 points. SI 5, I think I just did this, has 14 -- number 3 has 14, I did that. Uh, SI 4 has eight point -- I mean, SI 5, pardon me, number 4, has eight points. And SI 6, number 6, has six points. Now... SI 1, 1, has 10? I didn't call that. SI 1, number 1, has 10. That's right. Now I'm going to look. So how many do we have? There's something like seven or eight? Seven.
But we've combined, just -- but we've combined--
Yes, so we've had --
Do we have 10?
We really have nine or so up here.
10.
And I just want to see if there are any others with very high points before we did this that we could either add or put on the parking lot. So, we originally had SI 2, number 3, seven points. Now, number SI 6 has seven points, although no one voted for it this time. So you had -- should have things like from 7 to 14 points, is that correct? Is there anything less than that? Right. I'm not looking at any two or three points at this point, because I think now we have eight items that we have chosen, is that correct? Four today, that's one, two, the previous 10. Elaine is checking me to make sure. So that's good, we need that. Four, eight, and, and, plus six is 14. Oh, wait. I see, I did that. 14. We're taking this no matter what. Right, you're right. You do this for me. Thank you. I'm getting dyslexic. Yeah, so... This is eight. That's four.
Six.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you, you're brilliant.
So, Kathy, for the benefit -- if I may, because I know you guys are doing some math up there. Once you're done, for the benefit of the entire council, can we just go back through to make sure that there's agreement? Andrews is like the Federal Reserve adding interest to each one of those. Let, let... Kathy, yeah, why don't we read them, and then go back through the math one more time, just to double check.
The microphone, Kathy.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Um, number 1, City Completes Architectural Design Standards, et cetera, got two points today. It had eight beforehand, giving it 10 points total. SI 1, number 2, got six points today. It had eight points, but we have joined it with SI 3, the grant funding for affordable housing, which originally had six points, so that gave it 20. I added wrong initially and said 18, sorry. Okay. SI 1, number 3, got three points today, had five points. It's now been combined with SI 2, number 6, which had four points. So that's a total of 12 points. So SI 1, 2, and 3 have been chosen. Next one? SI 4, number 6, Streamline Permit Tracking Portal for Planning and Building. Got five today, had five before, 10 points. 10, 10 total. SI 5, number 3, got four points today, had 10 points before for a total of 14. SI 5, number 4, two points today, plus six prior, gives us eight. And SI 6, number 3, On-Site Solar Generation, had seven points. And I am calling that out because it's more than others. Nobody voted for it today, but it's a high number. Yes, On-Site Solar Generation. Seven total. And SI 6, number 6, and you might want to talk about whether this should be included or not, got three today and had three before, giving it six points, which is, I believe, our lowest. Okay, so that gives us eight total. That's already in progress. These are already voted on. These are -- are 14. These are already gimmies. They're gimmies, a lot. Thomas, these are already -- these are already what you voted on, and they have already a work in progress. They're in. So all of these are in, plus now you have eight more. That should do it, unless someone feels strongly. And they -- and I just called out the six point, which is the low end one, on tree ordinance, just because the mayor gave such a compelling speech, but I -- we should -- we could... Okay? I can't speak to that. I believe only the city manager can speak to that. The tree ordinance is already in process, says our mayor, your mayor.
And so again, that's--
A different mayor.
I think we're good. I think that combining, you know, putting five or six goals into one goal has been a struggle for us. So I do think objective achieved. The difference is on that goal, it has a tree inventory, it has all sorts of things. A tree ordinance is in process, not -- again, I want to make sure that we walk away and all our expectations are, you know, identified. So tree ordinance is just not the tree inventory and some of the other aspects of that. But as Kathy said, it's got six points. We can now take these priorities, put them into a work plan. We have $10 of need. Actually, today, we've got $20 of need and $1 of revenue.
Right, particularly because everything's combined.
So we've doubled. $22 of need. $22 of need and $1 of revenue. So there's still -- I mean, this is good, because this shows what the priorities are. Now we can budget, and then even when we start to budget, then the council will also get another decision point of how do we allocate our funding.
But some of the goal actually bring in the additional dollars.
Some will -- and that should be considered as part of the variable, right? And some of these are very limited costs, like the grant, you know, with, uh, yeah, so.
And some of these, and this is when you think about long term and how the city will change and grow over time, may not be finished in a year, just as some of these were started before. And so this may be a longer term, but look, if you -- if we went back and looked at the city manager's list of things you all accomplished in the last year, significant, really impressive. I know a lot of cities, and I was impressed, or to impress me. So you all are doing a lot of good things, and these will add to that. They just may not get over -- they may not get done in six months or even a year.
But the objective is to provide focus on what's important to this council as we move the city forward, right? And I think we've achieved that, that these are the priorities, this is the direction, I mean, clearly, and so I think it's a very good job on where we're headed.
Question. So what we didn't -- because we lumped things into certain categories, others are left out. And we have some committees or commissions that are struggling because we haven't defined projects for them to do that make the people on them feel worthwhile. That didn't make a priority on there. But let me bring back one that is -- I can't speak for the two people, but the two that have had their district meetings yet, mine's coming up in a couple of weeks, we haven't scheduled yet, but traffic calming. We were up at Progress Seminar, and I finally caught up on emails to find out that a little boy was hit by a car on the corner of Palm Avenue and Taylor. I live on Palm Avenue. Just a few months before, three cars were totaled in one week's time. So I'm glad to see that we've got city conducts traffic calming activities, but the public either has city council to come and talk to these things about, or they can have a committee or a commission where they can go and talk about it. Now, bike pedestrian doesn't count, traffic calming, but what's happening with the bike pedestrian subcommittee under Park and Rec is traffic calming. So I do strongly believe that we have to look at how -- what goals that we take, and how are we utilizing our public access points, our committees and commissions, to also create that avenue for the public to be able to have a better discussion.
Sure.
Their one minute at a council meeting, or their three minutes at a council meeting, isn't sufficient.
I understand, and quite honestly, often I have done things like this that are goal-setting, strategic planning, team build, all those things. We have spent a very small amount of time on this, in the interest of it didn't get done earlier a few months ago, because people didn't have time to fill out their surveys, few did, but not most. And therefore, now, down to the wire, you all are with the fiscal year ending. It takes -- it'll take hundreds of hours, I'm guessing, for the budget to be completed. So, go for it. Have a real three-day planning session. I did one not long ago for a day and a half, and they said, oh, it should have been two days. And somebody else said it should have been three. But when you break things down like this, it's hard to make choices. You know, you all started with 85 things up here. So you've done a fabulous job, and you've done a good job combining, and you've done a good job with starts. Now, if you want to put traffic calming up there as on our parking lot--
No, it's there.
It's here?
Yeah.
Okay, good. And so that's another meeting. I think that you've gone through this process and done a superb job. And it shows how much you're doing and how much you care, but the reality is, there cannot be 85 goals and have them be in process or complete. It's an unrealistic expectation. You can put other things up there and say, how are we going to do this? But now you've got to give the city manager and the staff, the financial people, a chance to do their flow charts, do their accounting, look at how this works, how it can work, and then you'll have another meeting. Does that make sense?
Are we good?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, bringing it back. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, staff. Thank you, the public who commented, both online and in person, and thank you for council. It has been hard work. It's -- I'm pretty happy with some of the goals. I'm not happy with a couple of them, because structurally, I think we've got some significant problems. And as mayor, I will do what I can with that hat on to fix that, especially on that. But I thank you all, and staff. I know Tom and Eduardo were here very late last night, and over the weekend on that, so I am very appreciative of all of the time you put in, and I look forward to that. And we do not have to have a meeting tomorrow. We do not have to have a meeting on Monday. We do have, at 7 o'clock, a meeting with the school board to talk about how we can better coordinate and how we will set up meetings, and that is going to happen at 7 o'clock on Tuesday.
Yeah, Mayor, we need to be careful, because that discussion's not on the agenda.
I'm just announcing the next meeting.
Okay.
I'm not saying anything. We will see each other all at 7:00 a.m. on Tuesday, in person. Thank you. We are adjourning at 5:06 p.m.
I would like to just thank the council, Kathy, all the staff. It's hard to dig at 85 goals, and there I'm down on what we did, so thank you very much.